Mr. Mark.
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell. Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mrs. Dantino. Here. Mrs. O'Donnell said she wouldn't be coming this evening. We'll move on to public comments for agenda items only and also there will be a public portion for the budget later after the presentation. Are there any questions? A couple of comments for the -- no? Okay, we're going to report to the business administrator.
Tonight we're going to present the budget to the public and --
Yeah.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Janice Garcia. I'm the Assistant Business Administrator. So I'm going to go through the 1920 budget presentation, after which we'll have a bunch of other questions that we have to answer. I've pulled the time because under eight minutes, so I will find out that. I don't think I'd go ahead and speak in about two minutes. I first just wanted to start off to show, go over some of our recent budget achievements over the past couple of budget years. So most importantly, you know, to maintain and improve the quality of education in order in the district. So some of the initiatives that we have had, you know, we have had the SMARTboard initiative. So at this point in time, I do, we have grades three through eight with all the SMARTboards fixed. I'm currently going to be working on grades eight through two in some of the specialized classrooms. We also have the Chromebooks. So at this point in time, all middle schoolers have their own Chromebooks. Also, we have most classrooms in elementary schools that have the Chromebooks on the parks that are for use for all of the next year. So that is on a rotating basis so that we can keep the technology integrated with, in the classrooms with the students. We also focus on professional development. So obviously, it's important that our teachers receive all the proper professional development and they stay trained and focused on some of the things that they hit on this year were social emotional learning, technology integration, and student-centered instructional strategy. And then probably most importantly, the district has increased the percentage of students meeting state standards. So this is important. Obviously, we need to stay on top of things. So we have been closing the gap where we're trying to get up to where the state average is and also very importantly, when you prepare us for some neighboring districts, we do perform better in those areas. So that's a plus and that's something that we continue to work on and it's always a goal of our budget each year. Another thing that we've tried to do is contain costs. So this year, we've had a telecommunications audit, which has resulted in significant savings for future budget years. We are also in the middle of an energy savings project, which should decrease our energy costs and also enable us to get new lighting in all the districts and also boilers and other things in our districts just from those savings from the energy costs. And then, of course, we also participate in as many cooperatives and interlocal agreements as we can to contain cost wherever we can. One thing that I think the board did an excellent job with in the past is maintaining and improving the district facilities and they've been able to do so without having a bond referendum. So the last time we've had a bond referendum was in 2007. So that means since 2008, all the capital projects in the district have been funded through our capital reserve account. So we're able to maintain that capital reserve account through strategically budgeting year after year. And as you can see, in just the last four fiscal years alone, we've done over $8.3 million in projects. So I think that's pretty amazing that we can do that and we've been able to manage that without having to do a bond referendum. As you can see, we did the animal and roof. You know, that was a large project. We did the telephone system. We did a couple parking lots. We did the HVAC system. So we sat down and did the 1920 budget and we wanted to come up with our goals. So we felt that we would go into this with the same goals that we've had, most importantly, to maintain the quality of education. So I'm happy to report to you that this budget does maintain all existing programs and services for district students with minimal impact on the tax size. We also are going to continue with the SMARTboard and the Chromebook initiatives. We will do another round of stack laptops to make sure that we have all the technology that we need in the district. We will also contain costs as much as possible and again, we will maintain and improve the district facilities. Included in the 1920 budget, we do have security vestibules that are scheduled to go into a couple of our schools. We will continue with the energy savings plan and we are looking to replace two of the final three roofs that need to be replaced in the district. So we sat here in March and the board approved a budget that we proposed and when we left, we decided, you know, the board really wanted to take an overlook at that budget and see if we could make any additional cuts to reduce the tax levy. So we worked diligently with the finance committee this month and we are reporting to you tonight that the budget we are proposing tonight is $225,000 less in tax levy. And what that means is the average home owner, what we presented in March was a $27 increase is now a $22 increase. So we were able to achieve another $5 decrease for the average homeowner in the past month. So the 1920 budget, the total budget is 118 million. That is a net increase of $1,370,000. This chart here shows you what makes that up. So the most important thing here, I think, is the operating budget. You can see the operating budget is up 2.8 million where capital is down 1.5. That mainly being because the animal and roof was so expensive and the capital projects this year are just less than the roof was. But the most important thing here is the operating expenses. So on this chart here, I tried to show you what makes up that 2.8 million by major categories. So you can see the increase, we have small increase for our salaries. We have employee benefits increase, but the two main increases that you can see, we have a 15 percent increase in tuition and a 6 percent increase in transportation, those out of district tuition and out of district transportation. These costs here, the benefits, the tuition, the transportation, they're mostly out of our control. There's not a whole lot we can do with those. You know, we have charged tuition rates, we have to pay those rates, we're charged for transportation. So we have to look at the budget in other areas to see where we can cut along the way to try and offset those significant cost increases. You can see that net increase of 2.8 million is a 2.64 increase from the prior year. And just something to note here that we struggle with each year, the district's general fund state aid has only increased 1.1 percent. And we're probably actually pretty lucky, a lot of districts are losing aid. But when our aid only goes up 1.1 percent and that's almost half of our revenue, you know, when we have an increase of 2.64, we have to make up that money somewhere. And also, just interesting, when you, when they calculated our state aid for fiscal year 20, we are underfunded by about 3.8 million dollars. So the goal is, the state's goal is to get us up to 100 percent funded, but they'll do it over time. And that number changes each year, you know, based on enrollment, based on income, things like that. So these are the budgeted revenues in the budget. As you can see, the tax levy and the state aid make up most of our revenue and they're practically equal at about 44 percent. We do have our district reserves, which are funding our capital projects. As I mentioned, we don't, we haven't had a bond referendum, we've been using our own savings, so that's what that is. And then we also do balance our budget with our own fund balance. So that's what that 4.1 million does. So what does this mean, probably the most important thing everybody's here for tonight? What is the tax impact? So you can see here, this is the average assess, these are the assessed values of town. If your assessed value was 160,000, your annual increase would be $18, which would be a dollar fifty a month. So the average in the town is about 188,000. So that means about $22 for the average homeowner and a dollar eighty-three a month. So I think that's, I think that's pretty reasonable to have a tax increase of less than $2 a month for the taxpayer. This just shows the history of the tax increase. So this is on a calendar year basis. So you can see this year, we just reported the $22. Last year was nine, year before was 61, we reported that was 124. One thing to point out here is you can see the rateables of the town and how they were declining and now we just had an increase. The rateables of the town directly impact our tax rate, obviously. So it's only one component of the formula, but it does have a significant effect on our tax levy. This is the tax history on a fiscal year basis. So if you look here, five years ago, our levy was 47 million. This proposed budget is 52 million. So it's an increase of about 4.4 million over five years. If you take the average, it's just less than $900,000 a year and that actually only calculates out to be 1.88 per year over a five-year period. And lastly, these are just our budget appropriations. So you can see, you know, what is really driving our budget. So over half of the budget is salaries and wages. And then when you combine employee benefits with the salaries and wages, it makes up almost three quarters of the budget. So that's a huge driving force in our budget. So that's where we need to try to contain costs. You can see that our tuition is significant, we have capital outlight, and you can see that our debt service at this point is actually very low, again, because we haven't had to do a bond referendum. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
You had the evaluation of the 2020 budget. Is that a good amount of, that's a number that was accounted?
Can you hear that?
So there's rebounding in the value, property values in town?
Yes.
Something about tuition, out of this situation, where you're finding your child out of our control, are we going to try to best ensure that we can drive that over time?
We can't hear anything.
You have to talk about it.
Okay, okay. I was concerned about tuition where it was mentioned that it's out of our control, but I was wondering how much time will we invest in doing shared services to decrease that cost, you know, before we send them out of the district or leave?
I know the child custody works very hard, too, such a situation. I think the last resort is to send the child out of the district, but there are a lot of children that just have the service condition. So, you know, we face significant costs when we do have to send them out of the district. I know that they've worked hard to bring some children back into the district and then having services performed here. And sometimes that has actually resulted in more costs because sometimes when you send them out, you can have shared aids where they have other resources. So I know they investigate that.
I guess I'm specifically wondering about district students and maybe there's other neighboring programs instead of sending them to a district program or, you know, also someone, maybe there's some neighboring schools.
We do have a program, also a program here. I know I could talk to Dr. Martin specifically about that. I know he knows anything specific that you have questions with.
It's a real case by case basis, determination.
The function of the increase is going to, by my, is the number of families that may have moved into Wallster County and they may have, in some cases, a prevailing existing high school, students already that, I guess, determined by other districts to go to outside placement. In some cases, that may not be the case, but we may not have a suitable program in our district. And we are, we don't have many actual classrooms. So if we were to, by illustration, have some classrooms, I know Mr. Trelo and Dr. Martin have explored that, we certainly have talked about it at finance and at building grounds. You know, we believe here in Wallster County, certainly the board has always felt that if we had bricks and mortar, we would develop a better program than our students going outside our walls. But we are certainly capped with that. So we have more children, we don't have chairs and desks for them. So in some cases, because of that, we have, of course, we deliver the IP, we need to go them outside places. I think what you may be saying is that if Runnymede had a, a existing classroom, do they have some open seats there? I know that Dr. Martin has a good network of directors in Cannon County, fairly tri, tri-Cannon area. If there are open seats, I think she and her staff are aware of it, but in many cases, they're all full up and we have to resort to a private school for the, yep.
So if they are going to a private school out of district, do we also pay for the transportation to get them there?
Yes, sir.
And is there times where it's a one-on-one ride to that institution?
A one-on-one aid on top, in the bus as well?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And that is, I think Mrs. Garcia pointed that out, as we have rising tuition costs, we also have linear rising transportation that goes with it.
Can I talk about the capital reserve? Correct me, we're allocating $3.4 million roughly in capital projects in that reserve. And that's over above 8.3 that we completed so far, correct? So in this four or five-year span, we've been able to, we will have, so we, we will have been able to complete over $11 million in improvements to our infrastructure, our buildings and grounds, like we, without, without the need for financing. Now, in that 3.4 million dollars, it is roof replacement and which roofs, did we identify which roofs they have?
Right now we're doing Union Valley and Wallster.
The continuing technology, the library movement, you're saying that concrete on upgrades are always necessary. How often do you upgrade?
As far as the SMARTboards, we are still in the initial cycle. We're hoping after this year to be, I'm not sure what percentage to put on it, but we will be, have most of the general education classrooms, the core homerooms completed, as well as the self-contained special education classrooms and a number of the resource centers will have them. And then we will try to determine, we're hoping that maybe one more year, we will have completed the SMARTboards. One of the reasons we purchased them, they have a long life expectancy. So hopefully, we won't need to replace those again for another five to 10 years before we would have to replace those. And then the Chromebooks are on a renewing cycle. We purchase around 1,000 of those a year to cover all of the incoming sixth graders with a new Chromebook and then also make sure that the elementary schools get both recycled Chromebooks from the middle school as well as some new ones to refresh their needs. And then staff laptops are replaced on a recurring cycle as well to make sure they have a current machine that operates well as it's essential to their, their job tasks.
Janice, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to confirm. On the one pie chart, there's a, an area where it says special revenue. I, I assume that that like title, title money and, or not, you can, yeah.
Oh, the federal state. And that would be offset with the state tax.
I have a question. As far as the budget goes, in the tentative budget, we had allocations for, which was probably a couple of dollars difference, for HR manager, custodial supervisor, and an additional district detective. Where does that leave us now?
I don't, I don't believe we had an additional detective in the original budget. The HR supervisor was one of the final cuts that we did this past month. What was it, right?
The custodial supervisor.
I don't think that we had a custodial supervisor in the original budget either.
So, jumping in on your time, so we're managing 11 buildings? Would you say that was one?
I'd have to see how many steps I have. One supervisor. At least one, heavy, sturdy buildings.
Probably 80 plus people. So approximately 100 people.
Managing top level.
Yep, 101.
I'm sorry, we have one supervisor for 80 plus people?
Yes.
And you said the HR director was the director of the supervisor, was part of the part of the title?
Yes, I'm probably at this point cut.
What was the impact of that?
Dollar one?
Yes.
That was the estimate.
Any other questions?
Okay, is there any public comments for the budget? Can you just stand up and state your name?
Hi, Janice, the man talking about improved district facilities and security vestibules, but in your speech that you just gave, you said a couple. So what schools will be getting that and how many?
Three middle schools will be and Lawrence Uni.
Pete.
Yes. Pete Heinball, Sickleville. I apologize, I got here a couple of minutes late. What's the name of our presenter today?
My name's Janice Garcia. I'm the Assistant Business Administrator.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. My first question is sort of a technicality. The, the budget figures that were advertised in the public notice that went in the newspapers and such, turned out to be a little different than what we're seeing here today because of that last-minute reduction. Is there any compliance, technical, technical issue with, with having a different advertised figures compared to what, what we're showing, being shown today?
Figures that had to be advertised were the figures that were approved as March remaining. So those were the figures that were advertised. That's what's required.
Right, so there's no, we're in compliance even though the numbers are different today? Okay, that's just a question. And also, if my, another question is, if my calculation is right, the tax levy represents a 3.6 percent tax increase? Is that, do I got it about right? So that's above the 2 percent cap law. So could you explain, but there are loopholes and exceptions in that tax, the 2 percent cap. Could you explain what the school district utilized to get from 2 percent to the 3.6 percent?
Sure. We used the full 2 percent.
Sure.
We also use a health benefit adjustment in the amount of 739,000. And then we also use bank cap, which originally in March, what we approved, we reduced that by 225,000. So we are using a portion of the bank cap that we had available.
Okay, thank you. So how much bank cap, after this budget is done and we use, utilize that bank cap that you mentioned, how much is remaining? How much bank cap is remaining?
Budget is approved as presented. At this point, there will be 225,000 left over that will be available for one more year.
Okay, one more year. So if we had gone with the original budget from a couple of weeks ago, we would have utilized all the bank cap, but, but now we're utilizing 225,000 less, okay. The 225,000 reduction at the, at the last minute, could you itemize what, what that was?
You did eliminate the one administrative position for the HR supervisor and then there was an additional $5,000, which we've had some recent retirements where we are expecting breakage in salaries. You know, someone at a higher salary is retiring, we'll be replacing someone at a lower salary.
Okay. The HR position has been back and forth a lot over the last year or more. It was vacant for a long time and it was, it was stated that we didn't need to fill that vacancy for a while. Then it was stated, we couldn't go any longer without filling that vacancy and we advertised for the job when we're ready to budget it, originally budgeted for it, ready to fill it, and now we're deciding we don't need it. What, what, what thought process went into the back and forth with that?
Essentially, the budget has, for the 1920 school year, gone through several reductions and there was requests to see if it could be reduced further from what the tentative approval was. So knowing that that position was in the budget, but essentially you have a paper cut, I thought it would be more prudent to use that than if it was to having an actual employee not be renewed.
Right. So we have, don't have a, at this point, we don't have a need for that, for the job duties of that position?
I didn't say that. I said it's a budget cut.
Yeah. So how, so there is a need, but what, just, just tell me what, what the thought was instead of me driving it out of you. Just, what's, what was the thought process?
It was financial.
The finance team asked to come back and see what else we could.
So we don't need those job responsibilities?
To keep it down, to keep the, the, that's what we talked about.
So we do or don't need those job duties to be conducted, that an HR supervisor would?
I think ultimately, we do need.
We do. So this is a, we're, we're just, deferring this hire is what we're doing, which is acceptable. That's an acceptable answer. I just want to understand, because we've been back and forth with this position for a year plus now. So we're deferring the hiring of that position? Is that what we're doing?
I don't know how paramount that position is. I mean, I think we just discussed.
Okay, that's a good answer.
We have one supervisor that has over 80 people.
Yes.
Has no health.
Okay.
So that's not acceptable, but we're getting by because we have a quality person, we have a lot of people, a skilled person. Right now, we have quality people working in from different departments, helping with HR matters. They're in this room right now, doing a lot of great work. It would be great to have every resource.
Yeah.
But if we were to roll out a budget that every resource this district needs, it would be about a $500 increase.
Right.
And then I don't think that would be the narrative we could present to this board.
No, I was just.
Until, it would be a temporary reduction, in my opinion.
Yep.
If the board has financial resources that are windfall, something that would, you know, benefit the board, I think the personnel committee should rekindle thoughts, not only about HR, but certainly maintenance, custodial, and what Mrs. Dantino was saying with regard to detectives, because we do still have many people attempting to send their children to our districts that don't live in Wallster County.
Yeah.
And we need resources to kind of vet those stories out. So.
Okay, good answer. That's what I was looking for, okay. One last question, the roofs that are in the capital spending budget, have we made sure we exhausted all warranties and contract, you know, warranty contracts and things like that, because that would seem to be mishandled with the mullen roof? Are we, are we going to try harder this time to make sure we take advantage of warranties? The Union Valley isn't an old structure, so the roof would, you would think, would have a valid, a valid warranty still with the roof. But is that, have we made absolutely sure that we're not spending where there's a warranty that could cover the cost?
Well, I'll let Mr. Long answer the issue of warranty. I don't know what building you're speaking of, I do know.
I'm talking about your roof spending. about HR, but certainly maintenance, custodial, and what Mrs. Bantino was saying, uh, with regard to detectives, because we do still have many people attempting to send their children to our districts that don't live in Gloucester Township.
Yeah.
And we need resources to, to kind of vet those stories out. So.
Okay, good answer. That's what I was looking, that's what I was looking for. Okay. One last question. The, uh, the roofs that are in the capital spending budget, have we made sure we exhausted all warranties and contract, you know, warranty contracts and things like that? Because that'll seem to be mishandled with the Mullen roof. Are we, are we gonna try harder this time to make sure we take advantage of warranties? Union Valley isn't an old structure, so the roof would, you would think, would have a, a valid, you know, a valid warranty still, uh, with the roof. But is that, have we made absolutely sure that we're not spending where there's a warranty that could cover the cost?
Well, um, I'll let Mr. Long answer the issue of warranty. I don't know what building you're speaking of. I do know.
I'm talking about your roof spending because roofs have a warranty with them and are we being absolutely sure we're taking advantage of these warranties with these proposed roofs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll review any and all warranties that exist before spending any money after we go through the process, whatever procurement process the board decides to, uh, go with. And, but yes, this is just a budget debout, it's not the approval. I know you know this, but this is just for, for, but yes, we'll exhaust all warranties if they, to the extent that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Ray Paul Doherty, Mayor of, Pete stole some of my thunder with the roofs. And as you all know, it's a real sore spot with me. Did I understand that you have capital reserve for Union Valley and GT School? Both roofs?
Both roofs.
Okay. And your statement was that you did exhaust all efforts to check on the warranties on the up and coming projects that you have aligned?
So, I didn't say that we, basically, before we spend any money on that, we will check all the warranties, see what applies, and make claims where appropriate.
Okay. For the most part, I think you're all good people and you all know me and got in a relationship with most of you. I don't think you do a good job on a lot of stuff. The roof is a real sore spot with me. You claimed to have done that with the Mullen roof and that was not the case. You failed to bring the manufacturer out, you relied on your engineer, which is not the foremost authority on roofs. You have two new roof projects coming up this year. I already operated the roof for, uh, Union Valley and we came up with, for what we'll consider a compromise, a dead end on the written warranty on that. I don't know that it's a bad idea that you do things more responsibly than you did last time, because I'll be the first to say it was very irresponsible, the way you did it. The roof was needed, there's no question the roof was needed, but how much money the taxpayers did not have to put out was the question. Because each and every year, taxes go up. If it's not the township, it's you guys. If it's not you guys, it's somebody. And people never, ever see what's described as a zero. Their taxes never stay the same. Township picks their pocket, you pick their pocket, fire picks their pocket, and you, everybody's got their hands in the pocket. But we want good government, we want good services, we want good schools, and costs go up. That's understandable. The fact of the matter is, you're gonna be going through two roofs again. And before you pass a budget that has a capital reserve, is it correct, four point six million?
Three point four is coming out of capital reserve. There's another six hundred thousand before you have the emergency reserve, which is probably a security.
Is there also any surplus that's not earmarked in this budget? I didn't see anything in the way of surplus or money that's not accounted for. Okay. I'm sorry?
Not sure I understand your question.
Is there any other funds that are not accounted for that's in this budget that is not earmarked for something or another?
We are allowed to keep two percent of our surplus as unreserved, which we have.
And that amount is?
Uh, it's right around three million dollars.
Okay.
Doesn't even cover a whole pay.
It's understandable that your costs have gone up. It'll be your responsible school board to provide all the services necessary. I'll, I'll bring this around. I would have to insist that before you begin any other roof projects, that you bring manufacturers in on an eighteen-year-old roof, whether you have a written warranty or not, okay? And I do remember Mr. Bilado saying that he thought at some point in the past that residential roofing was used on school commercial buildings. Who is the architect for the school board at this time?
Now or back then?
Uh, who is right now? Okay, do you remember who it was back when the Union Valley was built?
Garrison.
I'm sorry?
Garrison Architects.
Okay. Do they, do they still do business with the school board at all?
No.
That's a great thing. Okay. I think that, uh, having the manufacturers on board and not an engineer. Engineers are engineers of all things, but they're not a spec, they're not specialists on roofs. I really think you ought to do it right this time, because you didn't last time. Thank you.
Any other comments regarding the budget?
Denise Kuei. The first question that was asked regarding the ratables, could that be repeated? Because I didn't hear the question or the answer.
Uh, Mr. Angeloni asked if the ratable figures that were in my presentation were, um, actual figures? And yes, they are, they came from the township.
And can you explain why there is an increase over last year's decrease?
Why the ratables went up this year?
Yes.
Um, I can't speak for the township, but, you know, normally ratables go up as businesses come into the town. I'd have to ask the township, because that's why the ratables went up. But usually, it's because businesses are coming into the town.
Okay. And my second question pertains to the cooperative, uh, purchasing. Is that something we have to do or something we choose to do?
Uh, we choose to do it. Most districts do that. Um, you save, you do have significant savings when you work together as a group, you know, when you have.
And how do you determine that?
How do we determine what the savings will be?
Yes. For example, the Mullen roof was done through a cooperative, but I'm not sure how that saved us any money.
Well, there's all different types of procurement methods. So, when we went through the co-op, there's, there's different benefits and different, there are pros and cons to using the co-op. So, sometimes it's a time issue, you know? If we needed to get through a procurement process more quickly, you could do that through a co-op where you're, or if there's a reason why you can't fit that project. So, we would have investigated and, you know, done an analysis of, you know, time and savings in that whole process. I can't speak, um, specifically, because I wasn't here then, but our purchasing agent does a gale in where he goes through and makes sure that he's getting the best price he can get, um, in the time that he can do it.
So, there is an analysis report that I could offer for that, that would show how the cooperative benefited us and the Mullen roof?
We would have documents, um, on hand that showed, um, what the cost was for using the co-op.
Well, I know what the cost was for using the co-op. I want to know how it saved us money.
Um, I would have to check to see what's on hand, to see what sort of cost analysis that we have. Like I said, I was not personally here last year when that was done. So, I can look into that and get back to you.
Okay, I would appreciate that. And also, my last question pertains to the budget increase that contains the capital decrease of one and a half million dollars. Is that because of the Mullen roof?
Correct. So, the Mullen roof was four point eight million dollars in my previous budget and this year we're pulling out, uh, we've budgeted about three point four, um, which we're pulling out from our capital reserve.
So, it didn't increase our taxes when it was done, but it's increasing our taxes now?
It's no, um, because we used, used our savings, um, that we had at the time. So, when we put the Mullen roof in the budget, the four point eight million, we also had a revenue coming from ourselves. Same thing for this year, whatever capital projects are in the budget this year, we're using our own savings to fund those. It's not affecting the tax rate currently, uh, this year's tax rate.
Okay, but isn't the negative figure in the capital part of the need for the increase in the budget, which is why our taxes are going up now?
Say again?
Isn't the negative figure in this capital number here, which you said is because of the Mullen school, part of the need for the net increase in the budget this year that's raising our taxes?
No, because the cap, no, because there, that was, that was our own money that we used. When we used, you know, you're, you're looking at the appropriation side, we also have a revenue side. So, we had a revenue to offset that capital in both years. So, technically, that negative one point four million dollars isn't affecting the tax rate.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Stephala. Thank you. Is there anything that prohibits you from looking into, uh, utilizing local businesses for your roof projects and keeping the money local, whether it be the county or right here in Gloucester Township, which we have two commercial roofing companies here in the township?
Yeah, because God forbid that that roofing contractor ever made a donation to anything, he'd be called to the carpet. So, our best thing is to go out and bid it the way we're, we have to bid it.
We have to. We have to. We have to. We have to do it a bidding process.
Okay.
Sometimes you might have a smaller company that may bid and they might not be able to handle a job that size.
Right, with the specifications.
That's, that, isn't that to be determined by the roofing company? It is coming out to bid that with local companies?
No, it's determined by our specifications.
Well, okay, because, uh, in, in response to Mr. Angeloni's, uh, comment, I don't think anybody's worried about who makes donations in Gloucester Township. No one ever has.
We're getting off track.
Number one.
You missed a couple meetings. We got to stay on track.
In, in any event, um, last, last time you went through this, you went through the co-op and state recommended and, um, as opposed to maybe opening the door for local companies, open it up, let's see what they could do, let's see what they can manage and what costs the savings. But I don't think the state of New Jersey co-op, or co-opting with the state of New Jersey is the wisest thing that anyone can do. We're the laughing stock of many, many states across the country. I don't know that their advice is all that great. And I think you could be above them and I think you could do a better job than the state provides. And take, take a look and see what's local. You had two local roofers that were commenting on the project with Dan Mullen. They were the foremost authorities and they were right here in Blackwood. I don't think that they had an opportunity to get in on that when you were choosing from the select brand that state recommended. And again, I don't think New Jersey is the greatest place to get a recommendation from. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Pete Heinball, Sickleville. I thought of another question. The seven hundred thousand dollar plus increase in health benefits that we, we're showing is, um, compared to last year, how, how is that calculated? Is that a, just a gross aggregate number of all employee compared, this year compared to last year or is it?
So, what happens with that calculation is you look at last year's appropriation and compare that to this year's appropriation. The state allows you to take a cap adjustment based on, um, the percentage that their state health benefits plan is supposedly going up. So, you get a two percent cap, so anything between the two percent and the number that they come up with, which was six point six percent this year, you can take that cap. You can take that amount, which calculates for us to be seven hundred thirty-nine dollars. So, it's the difference between the two percent and the six point six. And then anything above that, you, you could have no cap adjustment.
Right, okay.
Any other budget questions? Does he move on for approval of the budget? I would get a motion.
Can I make a motion? We have a, we have a motion to approve it by Mrs. Johnson. I guess we're open for a second in the discussion. If you have an opportunity.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Johnson?
A second? Second.
Questions?
Okay.
Mr. Angeloni.
I wanted to know, I would like to make a motion to table this until next meeting, just to revisit again our staffing with HR and our, uh, those around us, uh, assistants. I don't know whether we can keep those pieces in our, our, our picture or whether they will be.
So.
Would that mean our staff?
So, no, your deadline's May fourth, too. You would have to.
Yeah, we have, we have a meeting on May thirteenth.
The workshop meeting? You have a certain lead that we give this budget. Well, right, but you can still make, your, most of your adoption has to be by May fourteenth. That is the deadline. You serve.
Yes. So, we would have to make a special meeting?
Okay. You'd have to make a special meeting. If you were, if you were to table, it will by May fourteenth.
So, we have a meeting on the thirteenth and that just be an action?
If you advertise it as such, you could.
That's your call. Deadline is the fourteenth.
So, Mark, I saw, so I have a question. So, if you approve the budget tonight and you want to make a change or hire somebody in the future?
We do that on time. We can do all that. We do budget adjustments.
You could have three or four people retired between now and June thirtieth and then you could have a lot of it's, uh, available.
Do we have anybody anticipating retirement?
Please speak up, we can't, we can't hear you in the background.
Uh, the question was, would there be anyone that I know of that's going to be retiring? And I said, I don't know of anyone unless they come forward with a letter of retirement. But the district the size of ours, typically, there are people that submit their retirement letter between now and August thirty-first. So, there would potentially be money available to revisit HR, other positions.
Can we leave the position in the budget and look for funding?
Like after?
Other words, leave, leave the position in existence to be, to just not be budgeted over to it?
I, I don't know if that's as clean as I would prefer. I think it may be more prudent to approve the budget as it is tonight and then ask the, uh, business office to, um, report to me and then leave to the board what we do have filled full monies that haven't been earmarked and then the board can decide where they want to, they have to revisit, have an HR person or a maintenance person or additional detective.
You don't have to second the motion to table.
I'll second that.
Trace the second.
No, no. Trace the second.
Trace the second, the motion. I couldn't hear, but you just.
And then, then, Mr. Angeloni made a motion to table and that has now been seconded by Mr. Marx.
We'll have to cut from some places and leave to revisit. We're just prolonging the inevitable.
Any comments regarding table? Any questions regarding tabling it?
What would the advantage be to table? If we can add a person after it's been already approved, then what's, we're just basically just pushing it off?
Yeah, we're just basically pushing it off. I'd like, I really would like to have.
Because right now, there's no money in the budget for those, so you have to hope there's money to get Sonny Havelber.
Right. We're hoping for retirements, pretty much.
But we can visit that at any time, even after the budget has been approved. We can say, hey, we have some extra money, let's do that then.
You could. And I would anticipate that something is going to develop. I don't know what it is tonight, but we could have five retirements next month that I don't know about tonight.
So, basically, we're just waiting to see if we have any more retirements?
I think the budget needs to be revisited, because there's some, some things that are needed that we're not accounting for.
So, that would also raise the budget then?
I think the difference.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Two dollars, twenty-two and three dollars.
Total, total, right? Three year.
Annual, annual, the average.
Twenty year.
Two, yeah, so like right now, we're at twenty-two, we'll probably go up to twenty-four, twenty-five.
By adding one person or are we thinking on two?
I have no idea what the reason for the.
Can we do that tomorrow? You can change on the floor, you can do it tonight, you just gotta do it by May fourteenth, because the county makes that decision. Like, can you make budget transfers? Yeah, we do it.
I still have the question. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know that we discussed it.
Mr. Wong, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify, so the, when you go above cap for health insurance benefits, you've done that based on what you're allowed to do. Did you get a quote from your health benefit advisor as to what the actual increase is actually going to be?
Yes, we've gone back with three times with the carrier, with our broker. We do have, had multiple coverages. One of the coverages is increasing to him currently, one is the two major ones, one's increasing significantly, the other one is not. We did not budget a huge increase in this budget. When you, when you take off the fact that we have to provide chapter 78 relief, which is giving back to the employees, the increase is really only, it's less than 3.5%.
Well, my question being, so you've budgeted and you're able to go above cap for the health insurance modification, whatever the state did. But is it possible that as you're sitting here talking about money available for other staffing members, is it possible that your health insurance increases will be actually as high as what you're going above cap and that gives you some finances available for the staffing issues you're discussing? So you don't actually have to go back and increase your budget right now because you may actually not have to use all the money that you're going to be budgeting for the health insurance benefits?
Correct, so what you're kind of saying, revisit this later and see if you have funds available later to find that position, that's what they just do.
Right, and that would be a place that you could find it?
It's possible.
Potentially, yes. The theory is accurate.
If there's extra money, we can do a budget transfer. We've said it several times.
So we have that.
We have it. After you get a public hearing. Not for the public hearing. If you wanted to add that in, you can't, after the public hearing, change the number on the floor and then pass the budget. So either approve it tonight, your two options are, based on what you have, is if, pass the budget tonight or table it or vote it down. But if you pass it tonight, you do have the flexibility.
They could review those numbers to possibly, like, as soon as we should say, to possibly have the fund there.
Sure, that can happen.
Should be able to do that.
Correct.
There's a lot of variables, that's certainly.
Budget is a projection, it's not a, here's exactly what's going to happen every single step of the way for the rest of the year, for the entire year. That's something to keep in mind. That, yes, do you want, are there unanticipated budget matters, maybe one of the roof projects comes in at a lower rate after a bidding process or procurement process or however we do it, that would be extra money that we could use. So the point is, we don't know how every single thing that's projec, these are all projections. And that's how we set our tax levy and then you can make changes within that budget.
Can we go over to Senator Martell for the budget?
Any additional increase?
Yeah.
We have, we produce the science.
Do we have the 200 left?
225 left.
Yeah, you can use it next year or not at all. Because there's a three-year limitation on the. Well, you have motion in the second, so the roll call to table. Roll call to table.
Roll call to table.
Roll call to table, yes. But you're under the gun here, so.
Mr. Angeloni?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel? Mrs. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
No.
Ms. Dantino?
Yeah.
So we'll have to just table.
All right, we need approval, a motion for approval of minutes for executive session for March 18th.
And then?
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
Roll call please. Mr. Angeloni?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Abstain.
Mrs. Johnson? Yes.
Ms. Lynch? Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Dantino?
Yes.
Motion for workshop, March 11th, a regular meeting, March 18th. Second, please. Any questions? Roll call please. Mr. Angeloni? Ms. Grace?
What is that?
Mr. Hamel?
Abstain.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Dantino?
Yes.
Reporter, this is also Mr. Wong.
I have nothing to hold out on the moment. This is a discussion.
We have a change to item 7.68, professional development. We have one of our staff members who is advised by the Department of Education to Albuquerque, New Mexico, that is at the state of New Jersey's expense. The dates listed were from May 7th through May 9th. Because travel arrangements that the state prepared, that will now be May 7th to May 10th. So is that a night? 10. And other than that, I'd like to ask for a consent resolution for the market review on item 7.2A through 7.6A.
Motion please.
And then?
Any questions? Roll call please. Mr. Angeloni?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Dantino? Yes, on policy 7440 under 73B, abstain on the balance. For the business administrator, Mrs. Gray.
I'm asking for consent through on item, items 8.1 through 8.7.
Motion please.
And then?
Second? Second, any questions? Roll call please. Mr. Angeloni?
Yes.
Ms. Grace? Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Abstain on check number 115948 and on 8.7C. Yes, on the balance.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Abstain on check number 115975, yes to the balance.
Ms. Dantino?
Yes.
All business?
I do. Next month, I believe at Glenn Landing, school, there will be a recognition ceremony for teaching staff and other staff members in the district. There has been a request, it is a one-time request only, that we recognize a student from Chus Elementary School. The school has formed a scholarship on behalf of one of their staff who was tragically killed this year. And they've only asked for this one time, if we could honor the student at the May meeting at Glenn Landing. And if there's no exceptions, I will tell Mr. Williams to have the family be there. The recognition, the scholarship in future years will be delivered at the school. So is there any issue that we're having next month? Okay, thank you. I will let them choose staff. No? That's it.
Public comments for any items?
I need to send back the Murphy. Before I start speaking, I'm going to have her pass something out real quick. Well, that goes off. I have called up a few times to the superintendent's office, requested a meeting and was pretty much disregarded without my request being honored for a meeting regarding my son. So in front of you, you have letters from both my son Jacob Murphy, who is a student at Loring Fleming, you have letters from his pediatrician and his pediatric allergist. And I kind of put a little something together and read to the board here so you can kind of understand where I'm coming from. Picture this, my son Jacob's sitting at the school cafeteria eating lunch with his friends when one of them notices he's making little noises in the back of his throat. If you didn't know Jacob as closely as his best friends do, you would think he was simply clearing his throat, but his friends know better, so one of them bolts from the table to run for help, for help. You see that little innocent sounding throat carrying is a sign that he's about to go on anaphylaxis, which is a potentially fatal allergic reaction where your throat closes up and you can't breathe and you could die, literally drop dead at lunch table. Thankfully, the hypothetical story has a happy ending because his friends recognized this, ran for help, teachers know him, nurse knows him, he was taken care of, got his EBP pen and stabilized until EMTs and medics took him to the hospital. The story may not have a happy ending had it been a different situation if he had not been surrounded by the people who know him, who've spent pretty much all the 10 years of life with him. If he had been in a new school where he was just starting to make new friends, the situation could have ended in tragedy. As I, as Ms. Dantino and Mr. Millidore are aware, my son's father, my ex-husband, is moving a few blocks away, pretty much, into a different school zone for Jacob's last year of elementary school. This would mean he would have to do a change for fifth grade and then a change, I mean, sorry, yeah, change for fifth grade and then a change to Glenn Landing, which was already causing us some nerve back, you know, some nerves to begin with because he was going to a new, bigger school. The comfort level was there because we knew his friends were going with him. The realistic situation I just explained to you guys illustrates why we're requesting and why we have requested Jacob to remain at Loring Fleming for one more year, just to finish out his last year of elementary school. It's also why we're so dismayed that to this day, this is the first chance I've gotten to actually explain my scenario. We understand that Chus is a great school, we have no problems about that. We know that they have an action plan in place, we know that the nurses are great, staff is great, everything. But it doesn't mean it's the safest place, placement for Jacob. Given the fact that his life is literally on the line, that food allergy management is not a one-size-fits-all situation, his specific safety issues cannot be dismissed or ignored. As stated in the letters that you guys received, both his pediatrician and allergist both agree that this would be the best place for him to remain. Another thing to touch on here is that the situation is in a new place where there's no one to recognize these signs. By the time someone would realize that this was a really bad thing, kids who don't know him, it's not going to be enough time. By the time, I'm an EMT, I served foster township three years as an EMT here prior to them getting shut down. And I know adults can't even get out what they're, what's going on sometimes, they're panicking, they medically can't speak. If Jake starts off with those little signs and somebody doesn't realize it, by the time someone realizes something's wrong, they find a staff member, the staff member comes over, they get to Jacob, they get to the nurse, the nurse gets there, he's not going to be alive in that timeframe. It could take 90 seconds for him to literally drop dead from anaphylaxis. This is why all these people, all these friends, the people who are around him, they're protective of him, they know what foods to keep away from him, they see someone eating a sesame seed bread, they'll say, hey, keep that away from him, they know him. Moving, they're a key part, and it sounds crazy to say kids are a key part of the food allergy management plan for a child, but they really are. Moving him to a new school to finish out his elementary school would eliminate the key link and chain of his first line of defense and keeping him safe. You know, that's, that's one of the things when I send him off to school every day is I know he's safe and that's, I would hope all of your concerns would be for the children's safety when they go to school. When you have medical people telling you that this, they advise strongly that you don't move him, it would be medically unsafe for him, it's, it's not a joke. I mean, it's not, I'm not asking to go to this school for this sport or this school because I don't like this school or anything, that's not what I'm here for. But even though he's going to make new friends at the new school, it's not going to be enough time. I mean, he's not going to have enough time. If he's at lunch the third day of school and something goes wrong, his life would be in danger. And I, and that sounds frivolous, if it sounds stupid or it sounds like I'm helicopter mom, I'm sorry, that's not the case. But if this, something tragic, if something happens to my son because the decision was made that he cannot go to this, to stay where he is for one year, then, you know, the school district would be liable, you guys would all have it on your shoulders that, you know, your decision made it that my son or a child in this school district was either injured or, or dead. I mean, that's, it's a life or death thing. And I understand this meeting is all budget centric and everything, so I apologize for coming in with all of this.
You don't have to apologize.
But I know that this isn't a priority, the budget is the big picture here.
The children have a priority in the school board.
I, I, it's why I'm here, because that's what I was hoping, I was hoping to have the conversation with Mr. Millidore when I requested the meeting and instead I received no phone calls back, but a letter stating basically, sorry, not sorry. And for me, as a parent, as someone who, like, again, served this township for a long time as an EMT, this is really hard to stomach, which is why, you know, my, speaking to both doctors, they were out of their minds upset when I, when I explained to them what was going on and that's why they came forward and wrote these letters stating that it was medically unsafe for them to move. So, that's all. I just was hoping that you guys would hear me out and maybe rethink the decision to not allow my son to have a special permission to remain. We already drive him to and from school every day. We drive him, he's never taken the bus, mainly for fear of, of allergens and things like that, he's not as protected. We'll still continue to drive him to and from, he's no burden on the school system that way, we're just asking for one year for him to stay at school where he is. Thank you.
If I can, just because Sam and Josh are all negative, I just want to add that, since you are talking about budget, there's no cause to the school to make this decision in the best interest of this child because his dad, who has him more than 50% of the time for custody, still lives in his township, he will go to the same middle school he lived on if he was at Loring Fleming, it's just where is he going for his last year of elementary school? And since busing will not be required on behalf of the school district, since it will be a labor situation, there's absolutely no cost whatsoever to the school board, to the school district to allow him to remain in the school for one year. So this decision is really about what's best for this particular child, it's really about his health issues. So just as you think about that, I would, you know, I think that's an important topic to bring up tonight, especially because it's budget. If you do deny him, there have been policies that was mentioned by your board president in the one email that Sam received. Sam asked for copies of those policies, they still have not been provided, so I would say if you are indeed going to deny him, we request that you do say, share those policies with us so that we can determine if we're going to take it to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Pete Heimball, Sicklville. My first question is related to an agenda item that I neglected to ask at that session. The hip report shows eight hip incidents in March at Lewis School. Is there anything, that's a high number compared to prior reports. Anything happen there that the public should be aware of or you can disclose to the public?
No. I don't know if there's.
I don't know if there's some anomaly, or what, are you talking about the numbers reported in this agenda?
Yes, related to March incidents at the Lewis School is what I'm referring to.
No, I don't, I would have to research it, you know, and get it back to you.
All right. And another question, and it's a follow-up to the budget, um, you mentioned you gained some budget savings because former, uh, current higher salaried employees are retiring and being replaced by newer, lower scale salary individuals, which equates to a savings. Is that, did I hear that correctly? Does that happen routinely throughout the course of any budget year, throughout the rest of the, you know, the rest of the, the, the budget year, rather than, I mean, it must, retirements happen.
Retirements do happen throughout the year, but I would submit to you that in a school district, most of them are presented to the board in the late spring, most staff let us know that I'm coming back for another school year, so, like, by illustration, and then it may not be a whole lot of retirements in the month of January, but there may be a lot of announcements in April and May.
So your experience with decades of school district budgets, does, does this low, I mean, you, you budgeted what staff has on hand at the beginning of the budget year?
Yes.
You have these retirements, sometimes more, sometimes less, sometimes not till spring, like you mentioned, but in general, does the actual expended number at the, by the end of the year, kind of routinely come out lower than what you originally budgeted for today for salaries?
Based upon the amount of people that do leave a district this size, yes, it is.
And you can't budget for that? You can't assume that in the budget? Even if it's conservative? You, you can, it's a budget, it's, you, you mentioned, Mr. Wong, you're shaking your head.
No, no, I'm just saying.
You, you mentioned at, at one point, the budget isn't locked into anything, it's an estimate of what you think you're going to spend, which I, I, that's, I agree with that, but, so, based on decades of actual occurrences, could we, could we budget for, for, even conservatively, you could be very conservative about it, whatever you think, think is going to happen, you would cut it by a third, for, for example, and just build a budget, a reduced salary budget based on one-third of the retirement you think routinely happened in a school year, or something like that. I mean, but we don't do that?
No.
But it, but it's going to happen, I mean, but this lower salary number by the end of this fiscal year will, will have actually expended a lower number.
History does continue with the trend, there will be people that do believe it that we don't know about.
But we can't budget.
We don't know that tonight.
No, but we know, based on all kinds of experience, we know that something, there's going to be some number, and we can be very conservative, and instead of budgeting for this higher number and overtaxing the town, you could budget a more realistic number, or even a conservatively realistic number, lower than what you have in your budget today, and just, less tax on the residents of the town is what this would result in, and, and more realistic, realistic, truer budget, I mean, you're, you're saying that, you're, you're saying that yourself, that it comes out lower by the end of the year. So, I'm not sure why we're resisting budgeting that way, even if we're very conservative about it, budgeting something like that.
Being very conservative would not, would not result in very much change in the budget, the breakage between someone retiring at a higher level and bringing in someone at a lower step, and then being conservative based on that, in your example, thirty percent, you'd have to anticipate a lot of retirements throughout the year to make any change.
I wouldn't anticipate anything, you have, you have experience of what happens every year, you have, you have experience, there's nothing to.
I don't think that experience would say that it's consistent.
No, that's why you'd be conservative, but, but budget, so, but, I'm talking about a more realistic budget is what I'm talking about, at the end, but. Anyway, that's my comment, that's, I see a man, seeing a long stairs back at me, that's my comment, thank you.
Any other public comments? And move on to board member comments?
I have one. For the past year, we have sat here and listened and went along with the roof problems. There's not one person that's sitting on this board right now was here when those buildings were built. Not one of us was in, knows anything about warranties because that, we weren't there. We all live in Gloucester Township, we are all upset that we had shoddy work done, and unfortunately, it is our job now to make sure that it doesn't happen again. We are trying very hard to make sure that that doesn't happen again. We are hiring people that will make sure that it doesn't happen again. And I'm just sick and tired of sitting here being blamed for something we didn't do. Not one person here was sitting here when that happened. Now, I, I'm just as upset that we have to do this as you are, but we didn't do it. We didn't start the fire, as they said. We are trying to do the best we can to make sure that our kids have the best buildings that is possible, that everyone is safe, and everyone gets the best education. We are education, we are not building people, we don't, we're not contractors. We're here to make sure children get the best education that we can give them. And unfortunately, we have to use money that could have been used for something else, but again, we have saved that money. This administration has done a fantastic job in saving so that we don't have to go to the public and say, we need seven million dollars because our buildings are falling apart. These people have been proactive, they have saved the money so that we don't have to ask for a large amount. There are districts around, there are towns around, that are asking for ten, twenty, thirty million dollars in, in their bond referendums. We're not doing that, and I would appreciate it if you understood where we are. We're just as upset, we don't like the fact that we are putting that money out, but it has to be done. We will, and it's our job to make sure that when your grandchildren are sitting in that audience, they're not doing the same thing. They're not asking, why are you spending our money on something that should have been fixed? We are making sure that we fix it now. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other board member comments?
I just want to thank Jean and Janice and John, and even the finance committee for, you know, for, there was a lot of work that went into the budget, a lot of difficult decisions. They've, they've done a great job this year, especially with, you know, state aid numbers and everything else, and funding deficits, and so, thanks to everybody that helped.
Any other board member comments? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
So who?
All paper?
Bye.